We have resumed from our closed-door session. Now we will have an invocation by former Mayor Woodrow Hay. Would everyone please stand, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Romulus.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity. With all of our faults, you still give us your grace and your mercy. We ask your presence in this meeting tonight. We pray that, Father, that you will put your loving arms around these commissioners and our mayor, that the decisions that they make will be for the benefit of the citizen and the city of Boynton Beach. Thank you, Lord, for what you've done, what you're doing, and what you will do. We'll give you all the honor. We'll give you all the praise. For it's in our Savior's name we pray. Let every heart say, "Amen."
I allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I remind the public to please silence your cellphones. All right. Agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion, agenda is approved unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Craig?
Thank you. I have no disclosures, but I'd like to say to the City Manager and Eleanor, I thank y'all for the tour this morning. I want to tell you the temporary spaces and the sections that the city will be working in, they are up to par, they're up to standards. I was very, very impressed. You know, I'm saying, when I went and looked at the Police Department, do not kill me. They have so much room now. I said, "Why can't they just stay here permanently?" I was only kidding. Thank you. That's it, sir.
Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Costello?
No disclosures, but I'd just like to say, I've never seen so many plastic recycling-type bins in one location in my whole life. It just amazes me how this staff's got this all figured out. They get them from point A to point B and know what's in them. I was talking a little earlier, I says, "We've moved down here a number of years ago, and I still have boxes in my garage, and I still don't know what was in those boxes." So, good luck to you all. And I'd just like to acknowledge my lovely wife and my daughter Trinity over there. This is our last commission meeting here in this chamber. It's been an experience. We've enjoyed it, and we're looking forward to our new home in the next couple of years. So, I thank you for all attending. Thank you.
Your baby girl's going off to college next week.
Yes, she'll be going to the University of British Columbia, and we're gonna be here, and she's gonna be there. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing yet, so...
It's both.
We'll work it out.
So, for the past two weeks, on August 8th, I attended a District Four of the County Commissioned meeting with Steve Abrams. On August 9th, I attended our Feeding South Florida in Boynton Beach. I met with Todd Jones, the CEO of Publix. The Publix Charities is giving $5 million to alleviate hunger throughout the country and gave $150,000 check to our local Feeding South Florida. I attended the YMCA STEAM program for their summer camp. On August 11th, I was with the Church of Latter-day Saints for their raising of the headstones in Memorial, our Memorial Park. I attended the Bridges Back-to-School Bash over at St. John's, and I attended the 126th anniversary of St. Paul AMC, AME.
AME.
Thank you. On August 12th, I attended the American Muslim Alliance. On August 13th, I met with our police chief, and I got an email today from somebody who doesn't live in Boynton Beach saying they're not coming back because our police are making sure that people are doing the speed limit. So, thank you. August 14th, I attended the Crosspoint Mission 500 where a local charity gave backpacks for, to the students. I attended the VJ Day Remembrance and then went with Congresswoman Lois Frankel at the Culture Council. She ended up running unopposed, and so we're looking forward to having her represent Boynton Beach for the next two years. August 15th, I attended the Steering Committee for the Transportation Planning Agency. I'd like to thank the Commission's vote to allow the funds to the Transportation Planning Agency. Currently, we're working out on a new headquarters. August 16th, I attended the Palm Beach Habilitation Center, and I think it's Military and, or Congress and Southwest 6th and Lake Worth. They are providing services for handicapped individuals that are in need, and so I need to get with Debbie Majors and to let her know that we need to take a tour so that we can work more closely with them in the future. Afterwards, I attended the Florida Legal Cities Legislative Policy Committee for Land Use and Economic Development and was there for the conference, meeting with vendors, and getting more information about the Florida Legal Cities. On the 18th, I attended the Florida Legal Cities and Business Delegation, and on August 19th, had lunch with the State Attorney. And that is it for me.
Mayor? Yeah, excuse me. I have one thank you, and that was from Ms. Queen Esther McLendon. We did give her a proclamation for her 102nd birthday, and her granddaughter called me the other day, and she said that they was just still full, but this morning I got a call from Mrs. McLendon herself, and she told me to make sure that I convey to you all, you know, that she's overjoyed, overwhelmed, that you all thought enough of her just to recognize her. So, I wanted to thank you.
Mayor, on future agendas, do I want to wait till new business, or?
So, we actually have that on our agenda.
Okay.
On the City Manager's Report, if you'd like to bring it up then.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. And is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Moving on to announcements. First is to proclaim August 31st, 2018 National Awareness, National Overdose Awareness Day. Is someone here from that organization? City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas addiction is an American Medical Association-defined disease, and the stigma associated with addiction must be addressed so that no one feels shame or disgrace over illegal or illegal drug poisoning; and whereas drug poisoning is the number-one cause of injury deaths in the nation with an accidental drug overdose death occurring every 11 minutes, surpassing deaths from motor vehicle accidents or gun homicides; and whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, 63,510 people died in the United States as a result of drug poisoning, or 174 per day during 2017; and whereas according to the Florida Medical Examiners Commission, there were 3,234 accidental deaths in the state of Florida during 2017 caused by a prescription drug poisoning, representing a 48% increase over the previous year; and whereas the City of Boynton Beach remains committed to raising awareness in order to combat stigma and educate our community about prescription drug poisoning or overdoses prevention. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 31st day of August 2018 as National Overdose Awareness Day. Would you like to say a few words?
I, thank you, Mayor Grant, and thank you, City of Boynton Beach, on behalf of the Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates and the Ian Motter Foundation. Thank you once again for your support. Sharon Burns Carter. And Linda Motter.
Hi, I'm Linda Motter, Ian Motter Foundation. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your continued support for our community of those with substance use disorder, and, you know, we're still here, and we appreciate the community's support and prayers for what's going on. Thank you very much.
And I actually got something on the dais here from Eleanor Crissell, that we have an announcement for our Quiet Coffee Hour at East Ocean Cafe, 412 East Ocean Avenue, from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. We are actually having a guest of honor, Hoover the Basset Hound, who has been on TV quite a bit, who howls whenever the trains go by. So, I'm sure he's gonna be disappointed that he has nothing to howl at anymore. Moving on to our Item B, announcement by Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works, or Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager.
We're gonna change it up a little bit. So, we wanted to announce our city moves, but since it's our last meeting in this chamber, we thought we'd do a little brief history of this municipal complex and where it started. It will be brief, and I have taken artistic liberties in presenting this. So, anybody knows the exact history, don't criticize me. So, first, I wanted to start off by saying that this is the first time anybody's seen this rendering. This is a rendering of the inside of our new City Hall, the lobby area. So, I just wanted to kind of start with that, so people can see where we're going before we find out where we've been. So, in 1957, the city decided to build a new City Hall building, a municipal complex. They were gonna build a City Hall, police station, and a fire station on the site we're sitting on now. So, unfortunately, you can't see the pictures really well, but want to show you, over here, this was the plot of land that they bought, and as you can see, it was pretty empty. There was a few houses on it, there was not much going on on it. And this is actually the proposal from the architect that designed the building right here. And it was very interesting, because his fee was 3/4 of a percent of the construction cost, and he wanted a $300 deposit to get started. Those are nice numbers. So, in '58, built a new City Hall. So, I wanted to show a couple historic documents that we found. This was a pay request. This is seven out of nine pay requests, and take a wild guess on how much this complex cost. The complex was actually, the complex that was built starts at that wall about right there, that you see on that side, and it goes that way, and it was two stories. The chamber was actually on the second floor where the Finance Department is right now. So, if anybody's been in the Finance Department, that was the chambers. And then there was offices on both sides of a hallway down, and it ended, and then the Police Department building was built where it is now, and the fire station number one was built. So, all of that was built for, the contract price was $147,000. With change orders, it cost $151,000. So, there were change orders back then, but it actually cost $154,000, and the contractor was penalized $3,000 because he didn't finish something on time. So, we did that back then. I just want to show, that's the original warranty for the air conditioning system for the building. So, we did get warranties back then. It was only five years, though, so. And then this was interesting, because this was a thank you letter. So, obviously, when they opened City Hall, a bunch of businesses sent flowers. They must have had bouquets of flowers everywhere, because we found, I don't know, two dozen of these letters sent to businesses all over town thanking them for their flowers. So, I thought that was pretty interesting. People really liked the city. So, in the '60s, we started to grow. We headed to grow. I want to show some pictures. This was the only one we could find right now. That was the old chambers. And in the chambers was interesting, above the, right here, above the, where everybody sat, where the, above the dais, there was a little sign that said, "Local self-government is the keystone of American democracy." So, I think that's something we ought to build into our new, into our new City Hall. So, what we had then is we had the City Hall building. We made the map in 1962. They put the picture of the City Hall on the map. And these are just some pictures of some buildings around. There were a couple old houses right here that were, even in the '60s, we had outgrown the building. So, HR and purchasing was in a little house that the city had bought that was next to City Hall. So, we'd already pretty much outgrown it. So, then we went into the '70s, and what happened? Well, in the '70s, they were outgrowing it, so they decided to build. This was built in the '70s. We're not exactly sure when. I didn't have time to go back and look, but that's the West Wing, the original West Wing. One story, built, the permitting department moved into it. There's City Hall. Little hard to see. And again, those are those small houses that HR and procurement was in. So, they still never got into City Hall. So, in the new City Hall, they will be in City Hall. So, and then we come to the '80s. So, during the '80s, everybody said, "Man, we're growing out, we need to change." So, this isn't the first time the cities moved out of City Hall. So, in 1987, the city moved out of City Hall, moved into these temporary, temporary space in this building right here. That building was located where Ocean 500 is right now. So, two-story commercial building, the city took a couple of, about half the second floor and about half the first floor. And then they started construction. Again, it's hard to see. Basically, the construction in 1987 was wrapping the building with what you see today. The core building is still here. All they did was wrap it with concrete, add some stairwells on each end, added this chamber, add a little hallway over to the West Wing, and then put a second story on the West Wing. So, the city was very fortunate about moving all the City Hall people to a temporary space. Unfortunately, the Building Department people got left in the building, and they built on top of them while they were still working in the building. So, very interesting fact. We're not gonna do that today. That's not real safe.
It explains a lot.
It does explain a lot about building. But as you can see in these pictures, you can see, I mean, it's hard to see a little bit, but you'll see that's the old police station building, and you'll see the fires, that's the police station. You'll see the fire station in here where it's built. So, all of those were still left, and we wrapped the building to make it look like it was today, and added these chambers. So, these chambers were built in '87. So, where are we moving now? We're moving into a new Town Square. So, it's a new era. We're ready to take this building down. It's over 60 years old. It literally is falling down as we speak, which is why we're moving out. And we're moving into a new Town Hall. That's our new rendering of our building, looking at it from Ocean. And so, what we wanted to make sure everybody understood is, we are moving. We're moving to several different locations, and I want to announce where those are. So, the library is open. It opened at, it's located on Federal Highway, 115 North Federal Highway. It's just north of Ocean Avenue on Federal Highway. It's open and working. Customer service moved last weekend. They're open, they're right across the street, right next to the post office. The address is 209 North Seacrest Boulevard. And Development and Permitting will be closing August 31st and reopening September 4th at Quantum Park at 3301 Quantum Lakes Boulevard. And then, during the next three weeks, all of City Hall will be moving out of this building. So, that's where we're going, that's where we're moving. So, hopefully, you got a little bit of history of where this building is and where it's going. So, with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Mayor, Mayor, excuse me. Colin, I want to tell you, thank you, but for the record, when all this was going on, I was in elementary school, okay?
Absolutely. He did not vote for it. He was in elementary school. It was interesting in the '60s, though, because in the '60s, there was a lot of turmoil in the city. It was, we found a series of articles where it's three or four commissioners resigned and a lot of fights back and forth, and it was all about, yeah, and it was all about sewer rates. And during that time period, on a Monday night, they had hired a new city manager, and there was a big article about how great everybody felt, it was a great choice, hired to see, signed his contract on Monday night. Tuesday, there was another article that he resigned Tuesday morning. The shortest-lived city manager in history. So, we've had some interesting experiences in this building, so, and we're gonna have more in the future building.
Thank you.
Thank you. In addition, that we are still in the early voting for the August 28th primary election being held from Monday, August 13th through Sunday, August 26th, at the Boynton Beach Civic Center. The polls are open from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. each day. Our September commission meetings will begin on Thursday, September 16th, 2018, for the regular commission meeting and first public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. A special commission meeting on Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 6 p.m. prior to the CERA meeting to consider a final fire assessment rate resolution. And Thursday, September 20th, 2018, the regular commission meeting to include final millage adoption and final public hearing of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. One of the reasons why we have to move it to Thursday is that we have to comply with the school district and the county's hearing dates as well. And all of these meetings will be held at our new location for chambers, the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. Now, I'd like to recognize the significant military accomplishments of Master Sergeant Tanitra Lee, a lifelong resident of the City of Boynton Beach. So, unfortunately, she was unable to make it, but would deseric Cameron, Marietta Smalls, Sharonda Wilson, and Alexandria Wilson, please come down to the podium to accept the citation. City of Boynton Beach citation. Whereas Master Sergeant Tanitra K. Lee was born and raised in Boynton Beach, Florida, attended schools in Boynton Beach, and entered the United States Air Force in May 2001. Master Sergeant Lee reported to her first duty station in Osan Air Base, South Korea, serving as an apprentice. She administered coordinated issues regarding quality of life improvement. She was a vital asset during squadron exercises in the Damage Control Center. She was assigned to Andrews Air Force Base and was instrumental in tackling two major snow ice storms, controlling and clearing 8.8 million square feet, and enabling zero delays to the President of the United States missions. Selected for special duty with the Air Force Office Special Investigation as a facility manager at Quantico Marine Corps Base. Master Sergeant Lee is now the Operations Engineer Superintendent for the 22nd Civil Engineer Squadron, McConnell Air Force Base. She is responsible for steering the management of inputting and tracking to maintain $3.3 billion in base facilities and infrastructure. She also oversees seven wing contracts valued at $2.2 million to ensure quality of service for base-wide populace. Master Sergeant Lee earned her Associate's Degree in Maintenance Production Management 2009, Bachelor's Degree in Homeland Security 2012, PMC in 2017, and will receive her Master's Degree in 2019. Master Sergeant Lee has been deployed in support of several campaigns, Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom, and Joint Task Force Horn of Africa. Master Sergeant Lee has received several non-commissioned officer awards, the Major General Eugene A. Lupia Military Technician of the Year, Volunteer of the Quarter, and the Kansas Service Woman of the Year Award. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby recognize Master Sergeant Tanitra K. Lee for her military achievements. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 21st day of August 2018.
These are her words. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize for not being able to come home to accept this citation, but duty calls. I could not be here, I could not be there as planned, because I'm a way servant in the world's greatest effort. But my mom and family are there, on my behalf. I would like to thank the City of Boynton Beach for this recognition. It means a lot that I can be praised in the city in which I was born and raised. For the past 17 years, I've been fighting for my country and trying to make my family and my city proud of me. So, thank you, and have a blessed night.
We will now open it up to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record if you wish to speak.
Lucky it might just be me. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at the short video clips I sent to you this evening, right before I left work and came. They're very short. NBC News has been running clips about the climate change problem, and they are quite moving. In case you are not aware, it was over 115 degrees in Spain and Portugal two weeks ago. There's extreme weather all over the United States. We are having extreme heat waves. It's scary when Florida's one of the cooler places in the world. I would suggest everyone make an effort to go on NBC News, the nightly news, and watch these video clips on what's been going on. They are very short, powerful, and I know my students were moved by them, I know you will be too. I think when we're thinking about what can we do, obviously, we have tipped the crossing point. There is no change in global warming and stopping at this point. The experts told us the deadline was a couple years ago, and we just, you know, woefully ignored it and did whatever we were gonna do. You know, it can't just be me planting trees. But at this point, what we can do is try and mitigate the problem, and so what I'm asking is that everyone start planting more trees. Not just me as an individual, I just bought a couple more over the weekend, but everyone needs to plant. Whether you live in an apartment or condo, you can plant bushes and pots out on your patio. You can start encouraging your HOAs to plant more trees. We can, as a city, make sure we are treeing this place up as we move forward with Town Square and all of our other developments. We can make a difference. Don't think you can't, but we gotta plant the right trees, not palm trees, but actual shade trees, and we need to start working to make a difference, because all of us can make a difference. And remember what Gandhi said, "Be the change you want to see in the world, people."
My name is Brenda Lee Williams. I live at 337 Northeast 24th Avenue. I'm here with two concerns, well, not a concern. I just wanted to thank our city manager for the appointment of our police chief, and I would like to personally welcome our police chief to the City of Boynton. I haven't been around this summer. I've been on the go a lot this summer, so I missed out on the official welcoming that you had. The neighbor to the west of me, this is for code enforcement, or whatever you call the department, now I forgot, but the house has been abandoned since we had those four hurricanes, Francis, Jean, Ivan, and whatever the other one was. And there seems to be nothing being done with the house. Somebody boarded the windows up and everything a few years back, but the grass is grown up. The fence that was around the house has been torn, has been torn down, and there's really nothing that has been done. So, this is my first official report, because I was told you gotta put it on the record, and then they'll come about and try to do something about it. So, I would have hopefully... My address is 337, and they're just next door to the west of me. I think it's 341. I don't know for sure, because the numbers are gone, the mailbox is gone, and I forgot what the address is.
What's the street again?
337 Northeast 24th Avenue.
Okay.
Two blocks, two blocks north of Gateway.
We got a nod from our Community Standards Director. He'll take a look into it.
Is that what it's called now, the Community Standard Office? Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Kevin Homer. I live at 2505 Lake Drive North, here in Boynton Beach. And before you go, he's very approachable, and he's here, Mark Woods. And so, I approached him one time. Yeah. So, anyhow, sorry. So, plug for you. You're welcome. So, we'll start with the Boynton Cares. We hosted the August cleanup at Intercoastal Park. Thank you to Boynton Pizza, La Breaza, Deep Ocean Reef Bar and Grill for their gift card contributions, as well as Seacrest Recovery, and the other volunteers who came out to help. The next cleanup will be piggybacked by Keep Palm Beach County Beautiful for the International Cleanup Day, which is September 15th at 9 a.m. There'll be extra special, it'll be an extra special event with giveaways and shirts for the volunteers. I also want to thank Eleanor for not only teaching me the effectiveness of hashtags and the at signs, but for keeping Boynton Cares in the spotlight. Boynton Cares is one of thousands of cleanup organizations with the same goal. It means a lot, Eleanor, and thank you. If removing plastics from the environment is not your thing, and you want to hear about something even more exciting, how about the word SWAT team, C4 explosives, hostage negotiating? The Boynton Beach Police Department used my house for training a couple weeks ago, and it was incredible. It was one of the most memorable experiences of my life, and the men and women who, they put their lives on the line to keep us safe. And even in these drills, while wearing several pounds of clothing and heavy equipment in the 98-degree stagnant air environment and working beyond, working with these beyond dangerous explosives, I took notice, and I'm very appreciative to the department and for what they do for our community. With the help of the Communications Department, the local news, and hand-delivered and hand-signed letters from the police chief, we were once again reminded of how important community policing is. Prior, during, and after the drills was a buzz in town, which was very constructive in nature. When I, when I mentioned in a prior commission meeting that the department may want to look at the message of, "I want you to know me before you need me," this is the exact statement that the department roared to the community, and the message resonated even louder than the C4 explosives. And thank you again. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Bernadine. I reside at 9873 Lawrence either by your presence or by your email. And mayor Grant, I want to thank you for your work and thank you for your presence, and it meant a lot, not just me, to my mentees and all the youth that you had the opportunity to interact with. So, I wanted to personally come and thank you for the work that you do, and if there's anything that we can do in the future, not just to you but to the city, because we believe in giving back to our community, we want to let you know that we are here for you and for every one of you here. So, thank you again, mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
It's two shout-outs I'd like to say tonight, and that is that I sent a thank you, and that was to the police chief and men and women in blue in regards to the assault weapon that was found underneath the mattress, and I want to tell you all, thank you, job well done. If you didn't get it, I did send it. Also like to say to David, our sanitation director here this afternoon, you don't have to hide your face, but I want to tell you, we got a pothole at the senior center, exit in south, okay? Thank you. He's always so excited when I call him and say, you know, "I'll get right on it, I'll get right on it." So, continue to get right on it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more public audience, moving to administrative. We have, I believe, one appointment. That is Commissioner McCray for the alternate of the Planning and Development Board.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to appoint Boni Butch Buani. I hope I didn't mess up your name because I didn't name you, but I was getting close. But I'd like to appoint him.
All right. Do we have a second? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, is there any items that the commission wishes to remove?
I'd like to remove A.
And I'm gonna remove B as well. Okay. Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Thank you. I'd like to have our staff come down and let the citizens here in Boynton know what is going on when we see a price tag of like $15,500,000, you know. Tell them what is, what are we spending this money for, and also that, you know, we're not doing it only by ourselves. Thank you.
Yeah. Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. This is a resolution authorizing the board, the sewer board. The sewer plant that treats everybody's sewer is jointly owned by the city of Boynton Beach and the city of Delray Beach. So, it's a jointly owned plant. It's run by a separate board. It's an independent, it's a dependent district. The board members are the commissioners of each city. The plant needs to be expanded and restored. It's 40 years old. It's time to do some rehab on it and to expand the plant. So, the board is going out to get a bond to do that work and then, and then pay it off over the years. This resolution is, the cities are authorizing the board to go do that bond. The inter-local agreement is a little bit unclear whether or not, this just clears it up for the bank. They were just a little unclear with the language. Our lawyers believed it was there. Some other lawyers said it wasn't. So, out of the abundance of cautions, it's better just to clear it up and delegate that authority of the board. So, this is not the city borrowing the money. This is the special districts board borrowing the money to do the projects. And it will not affect the rates, the utility rates, that the city pays right now to the board for treating of sewer.
Thank you. I just want the citizens of Boynton to know that, you know, we're not finding all this money to spend, and we're not, you know, telling people that. We're still finding money. We're spending money over and over and over again, that this is a joint-up between the city of Boynton and Delray. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Speaking of this resolution, I've had had some meetings with John K. Markey about the unity of title, and I want to thank him for his help in getting that unity of title. And then the other thing, I just had a comment that he spelt my name wrong again. It's with a V and not a PH for the resolution. So, I'd like to get that amended. May I have a motion to approve as amended?
Oh, move with the correction.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to bids and purchases over $100,000. Approve the purchase of water meters and equipment with census metering systems as a sole source vendor for the maintenance and replacement of water equipment for the utilities, utility metering system. The city is currently using Census Flex Net System. Items will be ordered on as needed basis for the estimated annual expenditure of $175,000. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve the purchase of five mobile diesel generators from Tow Power Systems, Inc., of Pompano Beach, Florida, Kohler Generator Systems Distributor for the sum of $315,978.48, utilizing a price of the National Sourcewell Contract. Sourcewell procurement process satisfies the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have a motion to approve?
Second for discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff, I'm just saying, you know, in regards to these generators, are they being secured now? Because some years ago, we had some generators that was hijacked out of Boynton. I just want to make sure that these are under lock and key.
Joe Pater, the Intermodal Utility Director. Yes, sir. They're secured at the Eastern Water Plant Site and at the West Water Plant Site. These are mobile generators at the water plant sites, secured.
Thank you.
Question. Does this bring us up to a full complement of portable generators now that we're going to potentially need during an emergency?
We believe we have the generators we need in the case of emergency. We do have dry prime pumps that are master stations that take care of the master pumping stations, and these are mobile generators that we move around the city to handle any other power outages at our lift stations.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve the purchase of five mobile diesel generators from Tow Power Systems, Inc., of Pompano Beach, Florida, Kohler Generator Systems Distributor for the sum of $315,978.48, utilizing a price of the National Sourcewell Contract. Sourcewell procurement process satisfies the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have a motion to approve?
Second for discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff, I'm just saying, you know, in regards to these generators, are they being secured now? Because some years ago, we had some generators that was hijacked out of Boynton. I just want to make sure that these are under lock and key.
Joe Pater, the Intermodal Utility Director. Yes, sir. They're secured at the Eastern Water Plant Site and at the West Water Plant Site. These are mobile generators at the water plant sites, secured.
Thank you.
Question. Does this bring us up to a full complement of portable generators now that we're going to potentially need during an emergency?
We believe we have the generators we need in the case of emergency. We do have dry prime pumps that are master stations that take care of the master pumping stations, and these are mobile generators that we move around the city to handle any other power outages at our lift stations.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Item A, 8A. Approve JR Water Sports' expansion request for conditional use and major site plan modification for the expansion of the abutting business, including refurbishing of an existing 2,413 square-foot building and associated site improvements on 711 North Federal Highway in the C4 General Commercial Zoning District. Applicant Michael Wood.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you all.
Hi. My name is Jana Wood, owner of JR Water Sports. 725 North Federal Highway is our existing boat dealership and pro shop. This is our current business. We have been running a successful boat dealership in this location for over eight years. Inside the current boat dealership, Boat Display and Pro Shop, which you can see here in the pictures, we currently sell approximately 40 boats per year, do customizations, and sell boat parts, and plan to expand with more boat sales. A ship-to-shore store that will offer anything you will need to be safe and have fun on the water, including, but not limited to, life jackets, sunscreen, boogie boards, safety gear, and supplies. The current AmeriGas property. Self-automarine will transform this current property, eyesore, into a beautiful landscaped boat dealership and ship-to-shore store, which I will show in the following slides. This is the new site from the front of the building, looking at it from Federal Highway. We will completely renovate the current building, adding all necessary up-to-code plumbing, electricity, and handicap-accessible bathrooms and walkways. The new site from the north side. There will be an entrance into the ship-to-shore store, handicap-accessible walkways into the store, new windows, roof, inside walls, flooring, and nautical decorations throughout. This is the new site from the south side. It will include a decorative walkway, stone picnic table, entrance into the ship-to-shore store. Landscaping will be throughout the parking lot with new fencing, paving, and beautiful landscaped areas. I'll show you the detailed description on the next slide of the landscaping in the parking I know that's a little much, but if you have any questions...
One of the questions I have is that it says, it also includes the sidewalk on Southeast 6th Avenue as part of the site plan?
Yes, it does, sir. It'll go up the side there and recess down to, so we can make it crosswater, crossing, and then it'll go up. I was there with Gary from the city. We're gonna terminate it right by the telephone pole, kind of make it go back out onto the road because there is the crossing gate and everything there for the railroad track.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Casello.
What is your estimated time of getting this all operational?
I pretty much have most of the bids already in. We were waiting to get this last approval, hopefully to put it into the city for permitting within a month. So, to get the permits, and then we should be going full speed ahead. Some of the things that have slowed down a little bit would be the fencing in the windows just because of the aluminum tariff, but I still think that we'll still be within the 100 and, you know, I'd like to have it done by December, before December.
I know when this property came up, there was kind of contentious bidding back and forth, a couple of parties, and we eventually awarded you the property to CRA. So, I'm happy to see that this is moving forward and looking forward to this being completed. I think it's gonna be a real asset down there on the A1A. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casello said A1A, but I think Federal Highway, you know, but if you want to go A1A, you can go. But anyway, I do want to echo, you know, saying thank you for stepping up to the plate, and you said that was an eyesore. It was an eyesore about a month ago when you all did not keep up with the moan of the okay, so I'm just saying we all want to be good citizens, I'm just saying. So, it was an eyesore, and last month it was another eyesore. So, I'd be glad when you do what you say you're gonna do, so we can move forward. Good luck.
Further discussion from the commission? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to city manager's report. The discussed procedure for commission members to place matters on a city commission agenda. The explanation of requests. At our August 7, 2018 commission, the mayor requested staff outline a process by which agenda items may be placed on a city commission agenda. Although a written policy does not exist, a past practice has been established. If a commissioner desires to bring an item before the city commission for discussion or consideration, said commissioner should raise the matter at a commission meeting and request a topic be placed on either the next agenda or a future agenda. Typically, is there, if there is a consensus by the commission to be place the matter before the commission at a future date, then staff will ensure the item is placed on a future agenda. The question is, is that do we want to place those items at the beginning of the meeting, during agenda approval, or when we talk about future agenda items? Because we have done both in the past, where we talk about it at the beginning or at the end, or do you want to leave it open to have it at both places for approval by the majority of the commission? Yes?
You're saying, at what point in the meeting should we put those ideas forward?
Correct.
I mean, we've all, at least in my experience, we've done it towards the end. I think it's fitting at the end of the meeting to say, I'd like to add this to future agenda items. I guess if you'd want to make a distinction whether you want it on the next meeting's agenda or...
I think we've also agreed that whatever's on the future agenda item would go under new business whenever it is being heard for the first time. You know, the point is, is that we may have a majority to hear the item, but not a majority to move forward. And so, I think that's also important that we have as the commission, that we also have the ability to freely talk about ideas in the sunshine, because once we know that one of the commissioners wants to talk about this item, we cannot talk it unless it's in the sunshine, because it is something we're going to vote on in the foreseeable future. So, I'd like to put it on, you know, for, and I call it future agenda items, that'd be the time for any new business items for next or in the upcoming meetings. I got a thumbs up.
I'm comfortable.
Comfortable with that?
All right. So, we got a majority. The next item for unfinished business is discussion concerning providing an opportunity for the public to bring dogs to Oceanfront Park for a special day at the beach, at which dogs will be allowed off-leash and have access to the water. This proposal will provide staff an opportunity to determine the best way to safely allow dogs on the beach at Oceanfront Park and determine if it is an activity that should be expanded. Now, it's expanded, someone...
That might be a good word, though.
I think we're sending some low-key messages here.
So, Wally, I know that we talked about the proposal that the city staff has come up with to do a pilot program.
Yes. Wally Major's Recreation and Parks Director. As the mayor indicated, we are proposing to do a pilot event to allow staff to at least be able to experience what would be involved with implementing this type of activity at the beach and taking in consideration the challenges involved with the area whereby, again, we're dealing with the county property to our north and the private property to our south. So, what staff is recommending is that we create an area on the northern half of the park, which would be approximately 450 feet as far as the length would be concerned. The width would vary depending on the weather, but ultimately, we would give individuals with dogs an opportunity to use that northern part of the beach from 9:00 in the morning till 12:00. And we recommend that time because we anticipate that it would take approximately two hours to install temporary fencing that we believe would be required to maintain the boundaries and to prevent the dogs from entering into, again, the private property or the county property to the north. And for that matter, for, to prevent them to disturb patrons that may not want to be in that area. So, we feel that at least with two hours, we should have an opportunity with three park maintenance workers to install temporary fencing on the north and south end and take that down to the high-tide water line whereby, you know, if we go to the beach, we think that ultimately it'd be silly not to provide access to the water, because that seems to be one of the most attractive items in terms of being able to go there. So, we want to at least allow the dogs to get into the water if they so wish, and again, the park maintenance workers would set up the fencing, and then we would bring two of our part-time park rangers to help monitor the activities, again, primarily to ensure that the dogs stay within the areas that they need to stay within, but also then to deal with, with the potential issues, whether they be people not behaving or not taking care of the dog the way they should. And then there's the added challenge, if we were even able to do it during turtle season, to ensure that we would not allow the dogs to disturb the... season, to ensure that we would not allow the dogs to disturb the turtle nests. So, that would be something that would definitely have to be considered from the standpoint that that could really be a problematic issue. So, again, we would go from 9:00 to 12:00, and then that would allow us to at least have the beach back open completely and available for regular use by the mid-part of the afternoon. And that would include allowing the three park maintenance workers to do a very thorough visual scan of the area and to dispose of the waste, not only from the immediate area that the dogs will be, but also away from the park. I mean, we, and that's something that we still have to identify in terms of where we would bring it, but we know from research that that's something that we just can't let the waste stay there at the park, so we're gonna have to remove it. We do plan to have a few recreation staff to be available to do some activities. Certainly, we can reach out to some of the local businesses that provide supplies for pets to become involved, because one thing that we feel is very, very important is that we have fresh water available for the animals. It's very important that, and we will try to emphasize to people out there that not only do they have to make sure that they have their dog under control to the best degree possible, but also to avoid the, keep the dog from drinking the salt water. That could be very dangerous for the dog. Yes, sir. I see your hand is up. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Mayor, can I ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, you touched on what I really want you to touch on, that was turtle nesting season, but you made mention about two part-time park rangers. Have we hired two part-time park rangers?
Those were approved as part of our budget for the upcoming fiscal year, so we will have them in October.
So, you don't expect to start this until after October?
Oh, yes, sir, not until after.
Okay, that's what I need to know, 'cause you said part-time park rangers, I might say, whoa, okay.
'Cause one of the things we still have to confirm is whether we have to avoid turtle season. We've had some preliminary discussions with the Palm Beach County Environmental Resource Management Department, but we have to obviously ensure that that's a, an item that we make sure that we handle appropriately.
So, at this point, you do not have a date?
No, sir, not yet, not at this point.
Okay. So, what's the date you're looking for? You have anything in mind?
October, November? Again, if all goes well, and I think part of it is, again, making sure we have the resources, if all goes well, I should have the park rangers onboard, train orientation, you know, as close to the mid-part of October as possible. But that's ambitious, and I'm very grateful that our human resources department has been wonderful in this endeavor, but again, it does take a little bit of time to get these people onboard, but...
So, if we approve this, it's gonna still have to come back to us for a date, place, and a time, 'cause you got to get part-time park rangers trained, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you're just coming to us tonight saying if we, see if we wanna move ahead with a special date?
Yes.
Seems like awful lot of work just for one day, I don't know, okay, but it's gonna be done for a day or a week. This is what I'm trying to find, how long would you try to have this pilot program out so that we'll know how long we have to deal with it?
Well, the intent is to do it once, and that'll give us a very good opportunity to really see what happens, how it functions, how it operates, any issues, any challenges. And at that point, depending on direction that I receive, we can come before you again to summarize how things went and to determine whether, you know, we wanna continue in that manner or in a different manner. There are different options. We're choosing this option because we think that will give us the best opportunity to really flush these things through. It's a new program for us. We've heard it loud and clear that we have people that are interested in making this happen, and we'll do everything we can to do it in an appropriate and safe and ultimately a fun manner. But we need, there's definitely some things that we're gonna encounter that are gonna be valuable in terms of an education, but, you know, it remains to be seen how it's gonna really happen.
Okay. In regards to that special day, whether we approve it or not, I'm still going to say to city staff, if we approve this, make sure that you get advertisement out so that everybody in the city will get a chance to participate, 'cause a lot of times we do things and we get one or two participants, they say, well, why wasn't we notified? I'm just saying, if this is something, we wanna do a pilot program, we need to push this to see really what's gonna happen and see how many people in this city will come down and say, I want to take my dogs to the park. This is the way I feel.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Wally, do we have any, I see you need 400 feet of temporary fencing. Don't we already have temporary fencing?
We have some, but, you know, that's something that I could discuss again with Andrew. I don't think we have quite that much, and I, and then again, I don't know to what degree we can share this with other functions that that may be intended for. For example, I know I've seen some recently out at Hester on the football field because we had some resanding that we were doing. So, I guess it just, at this point, we don't know whether we will have any available, depending on what other needs are gonna be there.
All right, but that'll be a resource you'll look into, so we don't...
If we don't have to spend it, we won't, and that's why, you know, I think I kept that estimate fairly conservative.
Okay. All right. The other thing, we talked about some signage. We're gonna have some signage there to tell people exactly what the rules and regulations are in this trial period?
Right. And that's one of the things that I think I was probably conservative about. I don't wanna go out and spend $400 or $500 on signage if I don't need to, so I'm gonna try to work with it. I'm sure Eleanor will assist me, we'll try to find a way to make sure that we have good informational signage out there and available, but yet to do it in a way that's, you know, frugal, at least at the first time.
Also, could we make it mandatory that people actually bring their own doggy bags? I think most of the people that will attend this type of function are responsible pet owners. I firmly believe that. We're gonna get that one or two, that maybe not, but with that being said, is that something we, you know, could we provide like a roll of extra doggy bags, make sure they're there on site along with the signage? We got the park rangers, we got the fence up. This could be successful or not, but at least we're gonna give it a shot.
I have plenty of bags. After we opened up our park, you'd be amazed how many sandbags are out.
We're waiting for the dogs now, okay?
We got plenty of bags. Yeah, yeah, those are little things that, again, I'm thinking we'll provide that. We'll probably have a few shovels out there. We have had dog events before, and so to some degree, we're familiar with some of the supplies that we'll need, so, but it's still, the sand environment's a little different, but I'm thinking shovels, water, some towels. I anticipate we're gonna need some things to make sure the dogs don't get overheated, so I'm gonna talk a little bit with, I forgot, I'm gonna get in trouble over PD.
But don't we have a couple of those like...
Liz, Liz.
Don't we have a couple of those pop-up tents, maybe?
Yes, yes. The challenge with pop-up tents is if we get any breeze over 10 miles an hour, they fly like cats.
Okay, I'm just throwing this out there, but I wanna try to do everything to make this successful. This could be something great or not, but at least we're gonna give it a, you know, the old college try, and I'm happy to hear that.
We'll definitely give it a college try, absolutely.
We're gonna reach out to some of our local, like Petco and some of our pet supermarkets in the city and see if they would be willing to partner with us and sponsor it and perhaps even put on some little activities during this day at the beach for the dogs.
So, this is not...
I wanna see him surf.
This is not dogs who are leashed?
Right.
No, that is what I would recommend. And again, that's, to me, to some degree, subjective, but to me, it seems if you're gonna go to the beach, and it would seem very awkward to try to walk a dog on a leash in sand, and especially for the medium to bigger sized dogs, it's difficult. But if, it certainly would make it a lot easier from a management perspective, but again, just being realistic, and you have a big dog, Commissioner Katz, you know, I'd be curious to hear your opinion on that. I just think if you're gonna take a dog to the beach and put him on the leash, it doesn't make sense to me personally.
I mean, my, the thing is, my dog's 12 years old, so, you know, her running around with a bunch of younger, bigger dogs doesn't make much sense.
Absolutely.
And so, that's the other thing, is that if you maybe come up with an idea for leashed dogs, because if I'm not mistaken, anything below the high tide mark is public domain, is the correct term?
I believe so.
And so, you know, whether, you know, we also have a time event where we, you know, look for the low tide so that people can walk their dogs on the beach in the low tide area, which makes it much easier rather than the dry sand area.
And we did contemplate establishing areas for different sized dogs, but again, as it is, I can't imagine how we would be able to even start enforcing some of those things. And again, once you get to the water, there, it's open environment anyway. But yes, that is one of the concerns, Mayor, without a doubt, that, you know, if you, your stereotypical dog park had separate areas for the different sized dogs. In this situation, I don't think we can do that, but we can investigate options, whether, again, it be, I don't think dividing the area makes sense, 'cause again, once you get to the water, you're gonna, it's gonna be open.
And so, my situation is, is that, you know, I was living in Jacksonville Beach for a while, and they had certain hours where dogs were allowed on the beach, and first is hours when the dogs were not allowed on the beach, and you would receive a fine if you had your dog on the beach during normal business hours. I think it was from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Right.
And so, that's kind of where I'm also considering is, is that, you know, after we have this open play idea, that we look into a leashed dog day where we plan for it to be in low tide so that the public, we have more space for the public domain.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. And when this come back before us, I'd like to know what would be the city liability in doing what we're doing. I'd like to know the liability, how much will we be responsible for if somebody get bit or anything happened? Okay? Thank you.
In a previous meeting, that it'd be the same liability at any of the parks that we allow leashed dogs right now?
In my opinion, yes. It would be no different than if somebody went to a playground or, for example, we do have parks in which we allow dogs on leashes. I don't think it would be that much greater, but I wanna also preface that I'm not the attorney in the room, so I don't know.
But, you know, Mr. Major, the parks that we allow dogs now, the majority of them, they are on leashes. I'm just saying, 'cause I go to J.C. Park and they're on leashes. I'm just saying, this is something that we cannot take lightly, and that's the liability that this city will be at. This is what I'm saying. Either way, I need to see some figures, something in writing.
Commissioner Ramon?
Question, so, how long would this special day last?
From 9:00 till noon, but staff will have to get there two hours before, and we anticipate two hours after.
On a Saturday, probably?
On a Saturday morning.
And so, staff will be responsible for cleaning up after these dogs and their dog owners?
Yes, I recommended that we have three park maintenance workers there, and after they erect the fence, and their responsibilities would be primarily to keep the area clean and then do a visual scan after the event. So, that's why I anticipate it's gonna take us at least another couple hours after the event to make sure we get everything clean.
Okay, I'll state it for the record. I was against this since the beginning, I'm still against it now. I believe it's a waste of time, I believe it's a waste of resources as well. We recently decommissioned our after-school programming due to staff, but here we are, hiring staff to pick up dog waste. This is atrocious, in my opinion.
All right. But I believe we have the majority to move forward with this. My question is, is that my proposal for a second dog day for leashed dogs, is that something the commission wants to consider after we have this unleashed dog day, or if we can do it as a separate?
Yeah, I think this will be to bellwether to see if that's even plausible or, you know, feasible to do. If this turns out to be disaster, obviously, we probably don't wanna go down that road at all, leash or no, no leash, and I understand what you're saying there, but I think that, you know, let's just play it, but I agree, I would be open to that, sure.
Okay. But Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I just wanna say I'm excited. I think that, you know, there's valid concerns from people who object to it, but, you know, on the flip side of that, there's lots of people who would love to have the opportunity. I think that providing three hours on one day out of a calendar year to test our capabilities is quite literally almost the minimum possible accommodation we should put out there to test it. So, I think, you know, for individuals who aren't fond of the concept, that's three hours out of however many hours exist in a year, it's a tiny amount of time, so I welcome the opportunity. I know in recent meetings, you know, the idea of trying new stuff and seeing about possibilities came up in decisions we've made, so this is just another opportunity for us to try something new and see how it goes.
Wally, I'd just like to thank you for expanding the hours for our after-school recreational programs. I really appreciate that, thank you.
So, again, the only thing I wanted to keep in mind, I am gonna contact the county now and try to formalize the conversation a little more. So, right now, I've called them, basically as a courtesy, I've talked to their staff. Now, I'm gonna take it to a little different level, saying, hey, we're moving forward with our plans to do this, I need to make sure that the turtle nesting is not gonna be an issue. October 31st, I mean, October 30th.
So, turtle season ends, it's May 1 to October 31st, so then we may be looking at November if we need to avoid that.
But we may be, again, I don't think that should be a deal breaker, but we need to. I know when we asked them about putting rebar in the sand for the fence, and they said definitely no on that, but, so we'll just have to find alternatives.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm like Vice Mayor Ramon List, I'm really not in favor of this, but I want to give it every shot, you know, so if it passes, that's fine, and if it fails, then we know where we are, but I at least wanna say that I'm not gonna stand in the way of trying to see what happened. I'm just saying, you know, I'm not in favor of it, but at least for those that want to do it, you know, I want to say that I would welcome the opportunity for them to explore and see what happens, and then bring the report back to us.
And we'll make sure we promote it as much as possible so everybody knows. Thank you.
Moving on to new business, Resolution Number 18-117, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the town of Hypolexo for the city to continue to provide fire rescue services to the town for the period of October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2025.
Second for discussion, I'd like to know from the city manager, I'm just saying, how much revenue will we be picking up, Lori, from October 1, 2018 to September 30, 2025?
Well, it's, our next year is $436,000, and then it's a 4% escalator each year thereafter for that seven years. So, I'd be afraid to do my math quickly on my phone.
Don't do it, but anyway, you gave me some figures.
4% a year.
Thank you.
And there is a provision, the one addition to this that we didn't have in our prior agreement was, and it's in a testament to the, Hypolexo's very pleased with our services, they asked to add a clause to be able to extend the contract an additional seven years after the first seven years expires. So, that's added on in there.
All right.
You answered my question.
Yeah. All right.
Motion to approve.
Yep, we have that. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
That's a ready motion.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Staff recommends to keep tabled items 12A through 12D, which allows us moving on to item 12E. Jim, propose ordinance 18-021?
An ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, mending Chapter 10 of the city's Code of Ordinances, garbage, trash, and offensive conditions, Article 2, refuge, garbage and trash, Section 1030, rates and charges for city services, allowing for solid waste rate increase, providing for conflict severability codification, and an effective date.
Good evening, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works, I almost said Development, Director of Public Works and Engineering, have a brief presentation for the benefit of the public so that we can go through, just so they can be aware of what we're proposing. So, obviously, solid waste is a critical component of the city. We definitely need to continually maintain, repair, and improve our assets and keep pace with our increasing operating costs. Since 2015, the solid waste division has seen significant increases in personnel and benefit costs, waste disposal fees, vehicle service costs, vehicle replacement costs, and unexpected costs with closure of the post-closure activities at the city's former landfill. Staff is requesting a multi-year increase to the residential solid waste rates. The purpose of this increase is to cover the following items, addition of two new drivers, two heavy equipment operators, purchase of solid waste vehicles, and switching from a seven-year replacement cycle to a four-year replacement cycle, replacing aging carts, dumpsters, and roll-off containers, pay for expenditures to close the city-old landfill. landfill, increase in solid waste disposal fees, and replenish the solid waste fund. So this, this is a chart that shows our current rates in this fiscal year, $16 for residential and 1225 for multifamily. We're proposing a dollar rate increase next fiscal year, and then a 50 cents rate increase the following two fiscal years. So as part of our due diligence, we looked at additional cities that have solid waste operations, and when we looked at that, we would be on the low end even after the increase. This is a chart that shows that the city of Boca, West Palm, and Lake Worth, their current rates for single-family and multifamily. We also reached out to those, the city of Boca and West Palm are also contemplating rate increases this year, anywhere from 70 cents to a dollar for single-family and 40 cents and a dollar for multifamily. So in conclusion, the proposed rate increase will be used to ensure that the solid waste fund collects sufficient revenue to cover its fixed expenses and fund capital expenditures and to make sure we replenish our, our funds reserve.
And with that, I can open up to questions. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Andrew, when was the last time we had an increase in the city of Boynton?
It was in 2014, or 20, yes.
2014, okay. And we have now to?
13, I'm sorry, 2013.
2013. Okay, I'm, let me go ahead and say what I need to say about this. You know, for the citizens that live in District 2, who I'm speaking for, you know, we don't mind the increase, but we do, we're not satisfied with the service that we have been getting.
Absolutely.
And this is why, when they say, you know, why would we have to pay more money when, you know, look like we're last on the totem pole? So I'm just saying, if I approve this year, you know, you all have given us your word that, you know, everything is going to improve. And I do hope things will improve. I'm glad that you all are going to do your cycles like for regaining your new equipment and stuff online and stuff, because I hate voting for things, and then I say it's going to get better, and it gets worse or remain the same. That's my comments in regards to this.
And just to further comment on that, we're actually looking forward to, you know, the city commission approved our route ware. We're scheduled to do the install on the trucks in the first week in September. So that'll help us with our efficiency and tracking as well. And, and after we get that up and running, we're going to reevaluate the size of the routes, which with the additional drivers will help us with improving of their service, so that we can make some of the routes smaller, to make sure that we get the garbage picked up. Yes.
Vice Mayor?
I believe you just answered my question, but I'll say it anyway. Will this take care of the issues of missed garbage days? For example, my garbage will be put out on Tuesday, and it's not picked up till whenever the trucks happen to come back around?
Yeah, sometimes I, we had something just actually last week, where we had four of our automated side loaders actually went down in one day. And we do our best to try and shuffle people around and vehicles around to make sure that we get it picked up. For instance, that day, we actually took a rear-load truck and put staff in it, and we get all the, most of the trash picked up. But the days that we don't, usually it's a Monday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, so Wednesdays are a makeup day or a Saturday. So what happens is you'll see staff come in on those days, and we'll make up the routes. Typically, it doesn't go past the next day, but there are sometimes certain circumstances where it may go another day.
Right. So again, will this help resolve that issue?
Absolutely. The two new drivers will help that a lot. And changing the cycle on the equipment, that's the biggest thing that we've done, is purchasing the new equipment. So.
So can you itemize for us what we're going to see with, like, additional staff members or new trucks? What will we be seeing with this increase?
So we're scheduled to purchase eight new trucks next fiscal year. That's going to be, that's one automated side loader, two commercial, two jet trash loaders, those are for the vegetation, one Evo, that's the ones that we use for the, for the neighborhoods that are a little bit narrower, and one roll-off truck.
Staff, personnel?
Two heavy equipment operators. That's what we're, we plan to hire in October.
Are you not in the process of cross-training? One thing we haven't, you know, operators were typically specifically able to drive a specific style of truck, and we are now taking them through where they're going to be able to, it gives us more flexibility in moving people around, but they're going to be licensed and trained on all of the fleet. So it will help with getting, you know,
Yeah.
An alternative vehicle out there and staff to complete a route where right now we can't, say, if we have a breakdown.
When, when I came over to Public Works, and one of the things I identified early on was, one of the issues that we have is we have a truck that, we have a staff member, we have a driver, but they can't drive that automated truck. They weren't trained, or they don't have the proper certification to drive that truck. So what we've done is we've started doing cross-training, mandatory cross-training, and we're going to build a career path for our drivers, so that, so that the more useful they are, the more trucks they can drive, the more money they can earn, so that we have an opportunity that, on a day that maybe our vegetation is light, we'll be able to take that person off that truck and put them in an automated side loader, so that we can make sure that we get the garbage off to the ground. Yes?
Thank you. I don't know how y'all do your promotion over there, but I'm just saying, you know, I hope that people that's in supervisory positions, I'm even willing to ask you, can you drive a truck? I'm just saying, you know?
I don't have a CDL, but.
Can y'all drive? I'm just saying, you know, I'm not trying to be funny, but when you, you know, you're over department, you should know how those things work. And the next thing is that, you know, you have a day where you're not going to be picking up trash, send out a message to the commissioners that affects their district, and go on city line, and then put out another post saying, you know, sorry about the delay on your trash. You know, I'm just saying, instead of them calling us, and, you know, sometime we get called, you're not so pleasant.
Absolutely.
We don't repeat to you all what they tell us, you know?
Yes.
I'm a Christian, you know?
Yeah, that's something that I have been working on. I'm trying to come up with a template to make sure that when I send it out, I do get emails from the staff. The thing is, when we're doing it, we'll get an email out at usually around noon or 2:00 or 3:00 to know what routes weren't completed, or at least haven't been picked up at that point. But the staff works till as late as they can to make sure that we get the garbage up that day. So it's, it's kind of a catch-22. I don't want to put a notice out and, you know, but if we do, if we do know that we're not going to make a route complete that day, we can send out an email.
But let me say something. Even if you put out a notice, and then you could still meet that notice, it's still telling the citizens, you know, wow, hey, they, you know, they really doing something. I'm just saying, you know?
Yep.
Pick up, you know, I'm going to vote for this, but I'm just saying, but I do want to see, you know, more positive things, you know, in regards to this vote.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Andrew, I'd just like to say, those vegetate, the guys that drive those trucks to pick up, they're like surgeons with that arm, and they work great in tandem. The, I don't have any complaints in District 4 as far as the trash being picked up and all. I do have one complaint, and it comes up almost weekly, is that when the trucks put the container back down, in some cases, the lids don't close. Now, I've been told, and I don't know, maybe you do know or don't know, is there a, an ordinance or a law that states that those lids have to be closed on those trash containers?
No, there's no ordinance. There's not a, the health condition. But I can tell you from my own experience that, you know, where I live in, when the trash, the lid's open, and the water gets in that, it's hard to tip over to get the water out before you roll it out. So I think that's some of the biggest complaints, is that when a lid is open, and if it happens to rain that day, that the water's full. So what we are doing going forward is, we're going to be ordering new garbage cans with pre-drilled holes, so if the water comes in, that they, the water will come out. And, and a lot of it is training. I mean, we can't guarantee that, that when they flip that can open back.
It seems like the, the older truck was okay. When the newer truck that you picked, that you recently put on, that's the one that keeps the lids open. So I don't have an issue with it, but I do have one constituent who.
Yeah. It's not a health concern, but it's, it's a convenience. You know, we try to train the drivers. It's an adjustment sometimes on the arm. So, and if they don't get it exactly right, it'll flip it open.
Least of our worries. Thank you.
And also, they leave them half in the road sometime when they tilt over, okay? Because I don't, I go about four houses down sometime and just stand them back up. I'm saying, at least I did a good deed for the day, and I say, yay.
We appreciate all the help we can get.
One of my questions is regarding the four-year life cycle for the vehicles. If we're getting new vehicles, is the plan to sell them while they're still operating to get a salvage value for them, for a newer vehicle? I don't understand why we're going from seven, where before they were at five, then we moved them to seven to save money. Why are we going all the way down to four? Is that to recycle the, the new trucks, or the?
Yeah, some of the trucks we're going to keep as a backup. So the ones that are, are past its service life, that are basically unrepairable, or that we think that are just, it's not worth money to reinvest to have them, to keep them, we'll actually salvage, send those out for auction, and we'll get that money. The biggest reason is, even at five, the, the size of the routes that we have on these trucks, there, it's wearing them out. So I mean, these trucks are high-maintenance vehicles with a lot of moving parts. I mean, I cringe every time I come in the morning and see a truck pulled into the fleet shop, because I know that there's a possibility that truck might not go out that day. So the, it's just a matter of, the quicker we can, you know, we use them, we want to keep them one less year. So it's, it's a matter of maintenance.
Okay. All right. Did I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Oh, God. All right. Judy, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramelis?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to try out the new future items.
First one.
Yeah. Commissioner Casello, would you like to begin?
Yeah. On future gender, even the next commission meeting, I'd like to have, last commission meeting, we had a vote or a discussion on a diesel exhaust filtration system and some firefighting gear dryers. And we voted on that, and we approved it. But to my dismay, I assumed that all stations have this filtration system in them. And go to find out, we don't. That was the first one that's going to be installed. So.
No, we, we do have systems. We have exhaust systems in every station, just not this new brand.
Not what?
Not the new, the newest, this newest style.
Okay, that's, okay. So what I'd like to talk about on that is these diesel exhaust filtration systems. As we know, 68% of firefighters, that serve as firefighters, get cancer, and we know that diesel fumes is one of the leading causes of that now. So I'd like to have that discussion, possibility. I know we've talked about maybe putting one in a year for the next five years, four years. I'd like to see if we can possibly have that discussion about expediting that and getting this installed on a timely basis.
Sounds good. Does the commission agree to have that on a discussion for new business when we get some of the statistics on the, the amount of funding it would need?
Yeah, let's put it on the new business, and then, because staff is ready to go. I like, I'm enjoying seeing staff wanting to talk, but we don't want them to talk. I'm just saying, so let it be new business next time. We're trying to get out this old city hall.
Could we have staff just to tell me what kind of systems we have now?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, if it doesn't take too long, yeah. Now, they were almost here. Okay.
All right. Good evening. Latasha Condon is Deputy Fire Chief. Commissioner Casello, we do have vehicle exhaust systems in every fire station. We currently have uprights, what you call uprights, or wall-mounted exhaust systems. They're hoseless, they're hoseless. So what happens with those is, research has shown that those particular exhaust systems then effectively remove all the carcinogens and particulates out of the station. So we're going to the new prime event systems, which are, which are a direct source connect to the apparatus, and that effectively removes all the carcinogens from, from the stations. So we do have them.
Well, it's nothing more than a big fan. But we had them back, you know, back in my day, and I was just shocked that, that I assumed that we've already had these in place down here, but I guess not. I know Boca.
No, we do.
But not the type, not the most up-to-date type. It's more, more of a fan that sits on a wall that blows the exhaust out, correct?
Correct.
And with the heavy air we have in here in Florida, which you can cut with a knife on most days, I don't know how affected that really is.
Yeah, the new prime event, the new prime events is a new product that's currently coming out. So most organizations, most fire stations are going in that direction.
Del Rey's 100% installed, Boca's 100% installed. So, you know, I'd like to have that discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Two things that I'd like to talk about. One is talking with our sustainability coordinator, discussion on plastic straws and styrofoam. I know that we had a couple people from the community, the residents here, that were talking about plastic straw bands. And so I'd like to have a discussion from the commission about that as well. Is that something that the commission would like to have discussed on new business? And the last is, sorry to see you go, but we need to talk about pointing some, a member on the District 4. So I'd rather we do that while you're still here, because that November 8 meeting, I'm not going to be here, and you're not going to be here. So it'd be a good idea that we have someone there replacing you, and we put in the, the certain procedures that we know who's going to, who wants to apply.
I got a plan.
All right.
That's fine, but let me ask Council, three is the majority up here, right? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just saying, so if we don't do it, I'm just saying, you know, we're still covered. So I don't want to do anything hasty and rushing. We can discuss it.
Yes. Commissioner Katz?
Just a question, because I know we discussed some of this, kind of one-on-one regarding it, because it was inevitable. Does, if we start doing this, does the selection of a replacement have to happen following the, you know, the vacancy being created, or can it be decided prior to, or?
The way the code and charter are worded, it is the vacancy that creates the process. It's not the process that creates the vacancy. So you could talk about procedures and how you're going to do it and announce that you're going to do it, but until there is a true vacancy, there's no position to fill.
Oh, but the letter of resignation that he's already filed?
Not effective until he's.
Okay.
The verse 6.
Yes.
So Mayor, just so I'm clear, so do you want us to bring back options? Because I think there are actually three options of what you can do, and bring that back in a staff report next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
You know, I know Commissioner Casello is leaving. Don't make the man think we're rushing him. Come on.
Don't let the door hit you in the backside.
Well, I want to, before I close the meeting, I want to thank everybody that is here. We have something planned where everybody, we're inviting everybody who's in the audience to come up front to take a picture, if you'd like, because this is the last meeting at this city hall, and so it's been over 61 years. And so we're going to plan on putting this picture up in the new sitting hall when it's built. So, meeting is adjourned.